Good evening. Calling to order the meeting of Monday, April 3rd, 2023, will all rise and salute the flag. Madam Clerk?
Roll call of the members, Counselor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers. Is absent, Counselor Rizzo. Here, Counselor Serino. Here, Counselor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Counselor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Counsel President Keith.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present.
Good evening, everyone. Before we got the meeting started, I wanted to have the clerk, she's going to give just a brief reading about open meeting law and our rules of participation. We don't want to overburden the crowd, and we don't want to overburden the public with these, with rules that may or may not be as understandable, but in essence, in essence, we want to explain that we want as much public participation as possible. We owe it to you to open that process and make sure that residents and people are involved in the public process, and quite frankly, the actions of a few should not outweigh the community as a whole, and they should not represent the community as a whole. Last week, we had a very, a very good meeting, believe it or not. There was sixty, eighty, a hundred residents in here that were doing a very nice job, and unfortunately, at times, the actions of a few can really overshadow that. So we owe it to our children, our families, and those who we represent to be better, and I know that we are. So, Madam Clerk, if you could just help assist with the rules of decorum, and if anyone would like a copy of the rules of decorum, you're welcome to have them. We'll have them readily available. Thank you.
Under the open meeting law video recording and public participation rules, after notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body, or may transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair, as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. No person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If, after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. The following are video recording rules. If anyone wishes to record today's meeting, please approach the podium and provide your name and address for the record, indicate the type of recording device you will be using. This notification shall serve as a clear warning. No other warnings will be issued. Public participation rules. To address the City Council President, you will need to provide your name and address for the record. Permission to speak will not be granted if you do not provide your name and address. Two, conduct of the audience. All persons shall remain silent. Refusal or inability to stay and remain silent during the meeting is a disruption of City Council proceedings. This notification shall serve as a clear warning. No other warnings will be issued if the public participation rules listed above are not complied with.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of March 27th.
So, more than a favor? It's ordered.
Mr. President.
Counselor McKenna.
I would like to make a point of personal privilege, please.
Please.
I would like to commend the three revered police officers last week who de-escalated a situation at the March 27th City Council meeting that could have gotten out of control. From the revered City Council, thank you to Officer Andrew Lauria, Kenny Bruka, and Brian Breenz. Thank you.
Motion presented by Counselors Morabito and Serino, that the City Council award a certificate of appreciation to the Biocella family. The Biocella family participates in park builds, city cleanups, but more importantly, organizes their own family cleanups throughout North Revere. Their actions of going the extra mile for the community is not overlooked by this honorable body, therefore warrants the certificate of appreciation for your contribution to enhance our community aesthetics.
Counselor Morabito and Counselor Serino? Who would like to go first? Come on up.
Hi, guys. Hi, everyone. So, I'm Ward Six Counselor Ricky Serino, and tonight I have the distinct honor of honoring the Biocella family from North Revere. During the COVID pandemic, in the height of when we were all buried in our living rooms and in our homes in March of 2020, the Biocella family took it upon themselves every day, I think, to clean the pathways in North Revere. And we have some pictures on the screen here. The Biocellas walked the Northern Strand in North Revere every day by the park up there and behind the bike trail, and they cleaned off, they took trash out, they repainted over graffiti, and really tried to do their part to beautify their neighborhood and their city. And the Biocella family are staunch advocates for North Revere. They're very involved, they were very involved in the building of Harmon Park on Salem Street. So they really are stewards of their neighborhood, and the young men here were literally helping to carry, you know, shopping carts and TVs and just random stuff that people had dumped in the marsh along the Northern Strand. And as you can see, they pulled just trash bags and bags full for weeks through that early part of COVID-19. So I wanted to, along with Counsel Morabito, if Counsel Morabito would like to add a few words.
So, I know Counselor Serino mentioned the Biocella family was very active during the pandemic, and we were supposed to give this certificate back then, but things got busy and it just never happened. But they have been part of the community, helping out with park builds, cleanups, for as long as I can remember, I think, more, over a decade. When I first got involved in cleaning up the city and doing the park builds, what was nice was, it wasn't just one of them, it was the entire family, and it's a model for their children how to do good and give back to the community, and that speaks volumes, and not only does it speaks volumes, their actions speak louder than words. So, thank you for all you do. This is well awarded.
Thank you. So I will present these, the City of Revere, Massachusetts Certificate of Appreciation, an acknowledgement of your extraordinary community service efforts through your participation in city-sponsored park builds and cleanups. In addition to organizing family and neighborhood cleanups throughout North Revere, special recognition is hereby accorded to the Biocella family. This certificate of appreciation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this third day of April in the year of our Lord 2023, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 246th. Signed by Ashley E. Melnick, City Clerk, Counsel President Patrick Keefe, and motion offered by Counselors Morabito and Serino. So this is for Joseph Biocella. Michael, Michael C. Are you Michael C.? Daniel Hurley? Shane Hurley? Michael A. Biocella? Vanessa Biocella?
Okay, thank you.
Calendar item number four, motion presented by the revered City Council, that the City Council award a certificate to Joseph Maglioni for as many years of dedicated public service to the residents of our community.
Mr. Maglioni, congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I just want to say a brief few, and I'm sure that other councils can say some comments as well. This is offered by the entire City Council. But it's not often that you have a resident and a constituent and also an employee of the city work for so long and have such dedicated service, but I think the track record from Mr. Maglioni goes somewhat like this, and there's probably, I see some people in the room that know a little bit about engineering. More often than not, the residents of Revere and the people in the Water and Sewer Department and the DPW, and really everyone in city that, whenever we come upon a problem, you go up to a street, you get a call from a resident, and they say, you know, I don't know why, the catch basin isn't working, the water's overflowing, or the water pressure's an issue, whatever it may be, anything when it comes to do with the pipes underground. And then, especially when there's new construction, you get these, you know, college grads, engineers come out of school, and they know everything, they come up to a project, and they're scratching their head, and they look at the plans, and they say, no, it's got to be here. This is what I learned in school, and this is how it works, and this is what the plans say. And then they call Joe, and then Joe shows up and completely blows their mind and finds the pipe because he knows where it is, because he's been dealing with that street for his entire life, and looks at the kid, and I know you're always extremely respectful, and has it completely in the back of his hand. There's been more stories I've heard since I've been involved in the city where Joe is the dictionary and the encyclopedia of the underground world that we have in Revere, and we know that some of it's extremely weird, where I've seen it. I've had catch basins that go to nowhere, and residents have to figure out how that water's going out. Someone like Joe comes and solves that problem, and we've been indebted for his service, and I just hope that he'll continue to keep his phone active when we do need those emergencies dealt with, because you've been an unbelievable resource to the city, and we are going to sorely miss you. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank my family for putting up for the endless nights of me not being at events, leaving events, missing sporting events, people waiting at my house to eat a Thanksgiving dinner, and I want to thank them for putting up with me as long as they did. But my heart was in it, and I was more than happy and pleased and honored to serve the city. I met a lot of nice people along the way, and there are a lot of nice people still here, and I'm sure the men that I left behind will do just as good, if not better, because they have a lot more tools to work with, and I wish them the best, too.
So, our representative, Janino, has one from the State House as well, but if I could read this, it's a certificate of commendation, an acknowledgement and recognition of extraordinary, distinguished, and meritorious public service during your employment with the City of Revere. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Joseph Maglioni, Water and Sewer Department, and witness of Madam, the City Council, Ashley, Clerk, Madam Melnick, City Council as a whole, and signed by Counsel President Patrick Keefe. Congratulations.
Don't go away too quick. Thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the members. Honored to be here tonight to present this from the state of Massachusetts in recognition of your 35 years of service to the City of Revere, as Patrick mentioned and Joe alluded to. Joe's missed so many holidays and birthdays and events. He's worked overnights on Christmas Eve and Christmas morning. He's fielded all of our calls and the generations of counselors that came before us, because what we're losing with Joe's retirement is what's up here. It's the years of knowledge that he has on when that pipe was replaced, or where that natural spring is, or where these things happen in the city, and sometimes I would call him and say, Joe, how do you know that? He just knows. So, Joe, thank you for everything you've done for our community. I'm honored to present this, and I'll read this from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Joseph Maglioni in recognition of your 35 years of dedicated service to the City of Revere Department of Public Works. Thank you for always responding to emergencies regardless of the day or time. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this third day of April at the Massachusetts State House, it's signed by the Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano, and it's offered by myself and Representative Jeff Turco, who could not be here with us tonight, he has another meeting, but he sends his regards and congratulations as well. Thank you, Joe. Congratulations.
See, we're warming everyone up with the feel-good stuff. It's great.
Calendar item number five, motion presented by Counsel President Keefe, that the City Council awards certificates of commendation to the sixth-grade boys' basketball team for winning the state championship. The team is coached by two recent high school graduates, Tyler Duggan and Ryan Benenati.
Gentlemen, come on up. Ladies and gentlemen, bring the team up. So, just take a look up here. You have, first off, the state championship sixth-grade basketball team. Congratulations. But something, just earlier, when a special certificate was awarded to a family, we talked about family values and how you have learned behavior. Coach Tyler, Coach Ryan, I know that it's learned behavior because I know your parents, and both your parents have either coached with me or coached against me, and I know that it's important to them because they sacrificed their time, leaving work a little early, not getting that overtime, running down the field, coaching a basketball team, coaching a football team, coaching a baseball team. And yes, not everyone can do it. Not everyone has that flexibility, and sometimes not everyone can make those sacrifices. When you run an organizations in the city, it takes a lot of volunteers. Tyler and Ryan, not paid at all, to free, you're volunteering, you're nineteen years old, right?
Yep.
Nineteen years old?
Nineteen years.
So, I think we just need more kids like this to come out of high school, working in the real world, trying to make a few bucks, hopefully to get those things you all want, or giving back to your community that you love and you care so much about, and that's learned behavior. So I just want to thank specifically your parents for doing such a wonderful job. So congratulations to your parents. And to your wonderful team, that I hope that you see this, and you look up to Ryan, and you look up to Tyler, and you look up to each other as a team, because these guys showed you how to be winners on the court, and they're going to show you different traits on how to be winners off the court. So, congratulations to your team. We're going to talk about these certificates, and we're so proud of you. And I'm not sure if Ryan or if anyone on the team has anything to say, Ryan or Tyler, you got anything to say here? Quick word?
I just want to say thank you to the whole entire team for a great season, me and Ryan. We love you guys, and thank you for everybody that came out here to support us and show us some recognition. We appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Coach Ryan? And so just another note, and thank you to the parents that get these kids to these games. You play all up and down the Metro, Eastern seaboard of Massachusetts. You have games in Southboro, you have games in Natick, you have games in Framingham. This isn't a Revere-only league. This is a statewide league that I know every Sunday and Saturday, when most kids want to be sleeping in, playing Xbox, and doing all that, are out there taking their time, and these kids, they put in the hard work to win, and they clearly did that. And I'm sure it has a lot to do with the significant height you have here, because you're making me look short. But I'll read these certificates. City of Revere, certificate of commendation and acknowledgement for your extraordinary athletic achievement in leading the sixth-grade boys' basketball team to the 2022-2023 Metro West Division Championship. Accomplished through perseverance, teamwork, and discipline, special recognition is accorded to Coach Tyler Duggan. Coach Ryan Benenati. Daniel Alzate. Nicholas Tej. Christian Rodriguez. Jason Rivera. Justin Yin. Kevin Gesuina. Zach George. Liam Cartagna. Cartagina, pardon me. Bryson Cabral. And Noah Arrega. One question, who's the leading scorer?
Calendar item number six, communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund in the amount of $137,000 for improvements to Liberty Park.
Mr. Viskey, we're just going to give it two seconds. Do you want to take a quick recess?
Give a couple-minute recess.
We're going to call for one-minute recess just to let the crowd clear out. Thank you. Recession's one minute. Okay. We're back. Welcome. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Richard Viskey, CFO, 281 Broadway. I am here before you this evening to request matching funds from the city's Community Improvement Fund in the amount of $137,000 for the remodel of Liberty Park located in Ward Six. These, the use of the CIT funds have been given favorable recommendation by Counsel Serino, and these funds are part of a matching grant that gives us in total $500,000 for the renovation of Liberty Park, which would include removing existing play structures, removing the asphalt, removing existing mulch, and constructing new play structures, consideration for a pickleball court, and a gaga pit, not sure what the gaga pit is, but might be one there, new court and place playground safety, and new seating for the park. So you have a certification of appropriations from the Community Trust Fund, and I'm here to answer any questions on this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any counselors? Counselor Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to the counselors. I had alluded to Harmon Park a little while ago, Harmon Park on Salem Street in North Revere, that my predecessor, Counselor Patch, and the mayor, and the neighborhood up there were able to rehab, I want to say it was like 2018 or 2019, and now, five years later, we are looking to rehab Liberty Park, which is up on the hill in North Revere. It's really tucked into the neighborhood, and unlike Harmon Park, that's right on the main drag, the children in the neighborhood can walk directly to Liberty Park and kind of play because it's in a safe, confined area. So, what's up there now, it's very outdated, it's, you know, God only knows how old the playground equipment is, and Ms. L. Baker has been working very diligently and hard with, ironically enough, Ms. Biocella from North Revere and other North Revere residents to come up with a good plan, and I'm glad that we are able to provide the 137,000 to supplement the park grant that we'll be able to see this to fruition. So, it has my support, and I would ask my fellow counselors to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? It's going to be a roll. Counselor Rizzo.
I just have one question. I don't know if you can answer this, Rich. Is this the same as the Gateway Parks program, or is this another organization?
Mr. President, if I may. Johnny Hill, Mayor Zaid, um, I'm not quite sure how this violates open meeting law. You all received the communication from the mayor, um, and it also said to please see the attached presentation, which was included. That is what our project team is here to present you all today, to provide that information on what the updated timeline looks like for the existing site, what that entails for the MSBA, and also just to get a better sense of how we're going to move forward with the MSBA. We owe them a response by their, um, board meeting at the end of this month, so we need to provide you all this information and get your feedback so that we can get them a response in a timely manner. So that is why we're here today. I don't see how it violates open meeting law. I don't see how any rules of order have been violated.
Mr. President.
I understand. I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Hill. Councilor?
The only, the only motion that would be in order for the high school would be the, the bonding ability for the feasibility study at the existing site. And, and that's the only thing that would be in an order. I call for this to go without debate to the committee.
Mr. President, if I may for a moment.
Hey, I have to call upon you, just hang tight, sir. Um, I appreciate that, Councilor Zambudo. Madam Clerk, uh, well, actually, should I say that which, which committee would you feel most, uh, relates to this?
Ways and Means.
Thank you. So, this, would there be, uh, any, any, um, objection to having a Ways and Means Committee so that there's enough ti- uh, maybe, uh, following week from now, so there's enough time to be-
I have no objection to anything.
Just wanna make sure everyone's getting enough time.
All I want is the backup for what's, what's required now that we're moving forward with the existing site, and that is the direction of the money to, to fund the study.
Fair, fair enough.
Mr. President, if I may, please.
Mr. Hill.
Thank you. Mr. President, through you to the members, we, I, I don't believe this should go to Ways and Means, in my opinion. I don't think an appropriation is on the table quite yet, we're very close, but we still need approval from the Revere School Committee, um, for the existing site in order to actually then move forward with funding the feasibility study. So it would be a bit premature to go and ask the council to appropriate the $2.3 million, I believe, for the feasibility without having had the approval of the school committee. That's why we wanted to provide you all an update right away, in the sake of transparency, as, as you all have continued to ask for. And so that's why we are here, is to present the updated timeline for the existing site, which again does not violate open meeting law, does not violate any of the Revere City Council rules of order. Um, and again, this isn't foreign appropriation. I don't think Ways and Means would be necessary quite yet until we have a vote in place for the feasibility.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
I, I don't think we need the rules dictated.
I understood, and I, I was giving the, the man the chance to speak, and I agree, we have our rules, and we can, we can, if we wanna send it to Ways and Means, we shall. I was also giving him the respect to have a quick conversation.
Thank you.
Uh, would there be any objections to having a Ways and Means Committee meeting, uh, prior to the next meeting to make sure that this can be debated before the council committee?
Mr. President, through you, um, I, I, I'm just not sure why this is, uh, we're objecting to finding out more information. We, we, it's, they said it was the existing site. Why would we object to hearing new information to move this process forward? We've been delaying, 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 and it just seems like if it's more delay to me, and I just don't get why we would, we would not hear information. We have professionals, we have people in this, in the crowd that came before us tonight to give us new information, and, and what I understood was it's existing site, so I'm not sure why we, we would object to hearing this.
Mr. President, there's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor.
Okay. Uh, motion to, motion on the floor, so roll call to put this in Ways and Means.
Shall Council Order 23072, communication from the mayor relative to an update regarding the Revere High School construction project, be referred to the Ways and Means Subcommittee? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido?
No.
No, Councilor Novoselsky?
No.
No, Councilor Powers is absent. Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
No.
No, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
No.
No, the communication will be forwarded to the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Um, Councilor Visconti, could you, would you like to let us know when the Ways and Means Subcommittee is? Are you okay with? Well, the ne- the next city council meeting is the twenty-fourth of Ag- uh, of April, August, I wish it was August.
A couple of councilors, uh, did already schedule committee meetings for that date, but I can't, it's up to those councilors to-
We'll have a discussion and, and let that know, how's that? I, I don't-
Thank you. Understand you. Thank you.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor relative to reappointments of certain members of boards and commissions.
Councilor Cogliandro, do you wish to speak? We're throwing these to appointments.
We can just send these all to Subcommittee, Mr. President.
All of them? We have to take them up individually? Madam Clerk? Or can they all be referred to appointments?
They're all on one communication, so that communication is accepted.
Referred to appointments, all in favor?
Calendar item, sorry, sorry. Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Kathleen Savage to the Board of Health.
Appointments, all in favor?
Calendar item number ten, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of El Nara Fazio Inuliyava to the Board of Health.
Referring to appointments, all in favor?
Calendar item number eleven, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Kathy Penn to the License Commission.
Councilor Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, through you to the councilors, all these other communications, uh, for, at least for, um, new appointments, have, um, resumes attached to them. This communication by, um, Ms. Penn does not have a resume. And I would ask that before the council considers it, that the, um, the mayor or Ms. Penn send up a resume for whenever it does reach the Appointment Subcommittee. I also had a question. In the mayor's communication, he mentions, uh, that Ms. Penn serves on the, uh, Planning Board. However, when she called me about her appointment to the License Commission, she told me that she is not a member of the Planning Board anymore. So if we could get clarification on whether or not she's already a member of a board or commission in the city, as well as a resume, I, I would appreciate that for consideration. Thank you.
Good communication, and I'm assuming Councilor Cogliandro would have those questions as well?
Yeah, I agree. I'd also like to know, uh, which seat she's filling, because to my understanding, there's, there's three commissioners there, so, um, thank you.
Thank you. So this is still gonna be referred to appointments. All in favor?
Calendar item number twelve, motion presented by Council McKenna, that the mayor appear before the Revere City Council to discuss the status of the Beauchamp Community Center, formerly known as the Beauchamp Fire Station. The city had been in a partnership with MAPC to renovate the former Beauchamp Fire Station into a public performing arts space, but the status of the project is unclear. The mayor has recently notified the MAPC the city would be unable to move forward with this project, and this notification from the mayor to the MAPC follows a direct and verbal threat made by the mayor to the Board One, Councilor, to cancel this project after a council vote on another matter at the meeting of Monday, February 27th.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. On June 7, 2021, I presented a motion for the Beauchamp Fire Station, the oldest fire station in the city, and a historical landmark, to be restored. The idea of turning this historical monument into the Revere Community Arts Center was approved by the council, and then approved and signed by Mayor Rego on June 18th, 2001. On February 27, 2023, during the Ways and Means Committee meeting, I read a statement on why I could not vote for the schematic design of the new high school at Wonderland. After my statement and before our regular council meeting, Mayor Rego approached me, the only woman on the council, and said that the Beauchamp Community Arts Center that you wanted is done, then walked away from me. I believe this was a direct retaliation to intimidate me to change my vote. Based on conversations with the other five council members who voted against the schematic design of the new high school, they were not approached. This is not only personal, but it is also a discriminatory concern when other, another council, who voted no alongside of me, just received $137,000 for an upgrade to a park in his ward. Not even a month later, a letter was sent by Mayor Rego to the M-PAC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, that works towards the rehabilitation of unused buildings to create a community space for residents to enjoy. This motion was signed and approved by Mayor Rego on Ju- June 18th, 2021, only to be put to a stop completely on March 23rd, 2023. This community arts center would have had, would have been a wonderful space for all residents of Revere to share their creativity and work together alongside with those who also have a passion for the arts. A grant provided to the M-PAC, who was overseeing this project alongside with many of our city residents, were actively collaborating in focus groups, citywide community meetings, and stakeholder meetings to get this community building off the ground. This has been happening for the last six months. This retaliation not only takes away from our community, but clearly reflects the behavior of an individual that did not get his way. I understand tensions were high that night, and I would have had, I would have, I would have let the mayor's verbal threat go, but because I have remained silent with his bullying tactics that I have been occur- that have been occurring throughout my tenure as a councilwoman, but now with this cancellation of the Revere Community Center, I can't remain silent anymore. Enough is enough. Thanks.
Councilor Cogliandro.
I just wanna commend my colleague for having the courage to come forward and saying those things, and I just wanna let everyone know that if there's any question about what was said, I witnessed, I heard, I saw exactly what she described happened that day, and it's, it's disheartening, to say the least. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Councilor Rizzo.
Thank you. Um, and again, I, I wanna, uh, I wanna, I wanna commend you, uh, Council McKenna, for, you know, for standing up. This, uh, I think this is what people hate about politics, and, uh, I think what's most ag- well, not most egregious, actually, it's definitely not most egregious, but I think it's a slap in the face to call MAPC, who wants to give the city money, and tell them we don't want it. I mean, we fight hard for grant money, and, uh, and that money was going to be put to good use, but to take it away, um, it's really not just taking the money away from you, Council McKenna, he's taking away from the people of Beauchamp. The people of Beauchamp lost on that.
A point of information, it's not only Beauchamp, it's the whole city. It's gonna be the Revere, uh, Community Arts Center, so it's, it's not Beauchamp, it's the whole city.
Fair enough, fair enough. Uh, uh, but, um, the bottom line is, money was taken away that had been committed by MAPC to work on a project in Revere, and it shouldn't happen. And, you know, uh, I know, Council McKenna, you know, this wasn't the first time that you have, uh, that you have, uh, had to, uh, endure things like this. I remember early on with a vote on, on Beauchamp One. There was, uh, you know, you came to me very distraught, very upset, you never said anything, but, you know, uh, we talked about it, and, uh, and, you know, you had got over that. Um, but I, but I certainly never forgot it, I'm sure you haven't forgotten it, and there's just no place for this type of, uh, behavior. There's no, no place for it, and so, uh, I support you, Council McKenna, for coming forward the way you did. Thank you.
Councilor Visconti.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, you know, I commend you, Council McKenna, for coming forth, but it's, uh, I must say it is very disheartening to know that this type of behavior is coming from the mayor's office. Um, this is, is exactly what the city has had enough of. The division, the vindictiveness, the vendettas. And why? Because a vote didn't go the way the administration wanted. That's wrong. Council McKenna represents Ward One. This fire station is not for her. This fire station is for the residents of Beauchamp and the entire city. And there's no reason why the residents should have to suffer because of a vote that didn't go a certain way. That's wrong. And this city has had enough of the division that's been going on for quite some time. We need to be better than that. We need to do better. So, I commend you, once again, for standing up and speaking your mind and voicing it, because that's not an easy thing to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna commend my colleague for her courage, and, and, and actually, you know, I'm saddened that she, she had to go through what she's gone through in a long time here, and, and, uh, there is no place in politics for this kind of retaliatory crap. And I apologize for my language, but that's exactly what it is, retaliatory crap. And, uh, it's, it's bullying at its worst. We talk about, we try to teach kids not to bully, and, and, and all the good things we try to teach people, and here we are, at the, at, at the highest, uh, office in the city, and this kind of behavior went on. And, and it's not, it's not, uh, something that happened to me because, uh, I would've retaliated quicker, but the bottom line is, there's no place in the city for this stuff. And, uh, I'm disgusted by it, and, uh, again, I, I, I'm with you, uh, Council McKenna.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, this, this communication or motion is gonna be placed on file, all in favor? Okay. Refer to committee? Okay. Vote, sure. Committee vote?
Roll call.
Roll call.
On the motion?
Uh, uh, that's what-
Sure. Motion presented by Council McKenna, that the-
Apologies, I didn't see a pair before. I thought it was a communication. Apologies. Motion. Yep, refer to committee. I mean, sorry, vote, refer to committee vote.
On the motion, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Councilor Morbido on the motion. Voting yes, Councilor Novoselsky? Yes, Councilor Powers is absent, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the motion's been approved.
The motion has passed, but did you wish to speak in regards?
Yeah, John Stamatopols, 15 Soul Street, um, I came when I saw this on the agenda. So, yeah, I'm glad the motion has passed, and I, I didn't know if this was open for comment to the public, but I just wanna call out, I'm, I live within Ward One, and, and Joanne knows I'm not afraid to throw elbows when, when things don't go our way in the ward, and I come out here to speak for our kids, I come out here to speak for the school, I come out here to speak for the elderly, we wanna develop our neighborhood, we rally the group we come out in. Um, I wanna come out and show support to Joanne because we will, the neighborhood will support our counselor when she's on the receiving side as well. And I know I give her a hard time when we don't get things in our neighborhood, but I've been told by many councilors, she's doing the best she can, give her a break, she's got a lot of friction against her, and now I'm starting to see visibility to what's going down. So, um, from the residents of Ward One, we stand beside you as well, so I, I call- That's what?
Sure. Motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the-
Apologies, I didn't see a pair before. Correct, I thought it was a communication. Apologies. Motion. Yep, refer to committee. I mean, sorry, vote, refer to committee vote.
On the motion, Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Counselor Morbido on the motion.
Voting yes.
Counselor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Counselor Powers is absent.
Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, the motion's been approved.
The motion has passed, but did you wish to speak in regards?
Yeah, John St. Metropolis, 15 Soul Street. I came when I saw this on the agenda, so yeah, I'm glad the motion has passed, and I didn't know if this was open for comments to the public, but I just want to call out, I live within Ward One, and, and Joanne knows I'm not afraid to throw elbows when, when things don't go our way in the ward, and I come out here to speak for our kids, I come out here to speak for the school, I come out here to speak for the elderly, we want to develop our neighborhood, we rally the group, we come out, and I want to come out and show support to Joanne because we will, the neighborhood will support our counselor when she's on the receiving side as well, and I know I give her a hard time when we don't get things in our neighborhood, but I've been told by many counselors, she's doing the best she can, give her breaks, she's got a lot of friction against her, and now I'm starting to see visibility to what's going down, so from the residents of Ward One, we stand beside you as well, so I, I call that out because there's many things we're waiting to get done in our neighborhood for years that I'm told are, you know, on the calendar, and if I'm a resident of a ward that is being, that is basically being penalized for whatever reason or whatever their voting is, I want to just call attention to it that we want to make sure that we're not being punished because our counselor, our ward counselor, is not going with the flow or, or, you know, acting as, as folks hope she would, so thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, sir.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Serino that the city council meet an executive session with the city solicitor at the earliest convenience in order for the city solicitor to update the city council on the status of and to discuss with the council the city's legal strategy in the pending CBW lending LLC versus City of Revere case in light of the city council's March 27 affirmation that its position is the Wonderland site shall not be utilized for a new Revere high school.
Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to vote on this, but I was basically led to believe by the mayor and the city solicitor that there's no chance in hell we're going to have an executive session or discuss going back on Wonderland. That is the administration's, that is what I got from the administration, so it seems that we are at an impasse as to the city council views one thing and the mayor views another, and I don't know where we go from here, but I would still like to pass this motion. It will get vetoed, I'm sure, there will be no executive session, and this will be, I believe, on the administration to defend as to why we are not trying to figure out what to do with Wonderland from here, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils? Counselor Zambudo.
I commend my colleague for his motion. It's, it's a common sense motion. Unfortunately, we're lacking some common sense here, so I stand with him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I, I really wasn't going to speak on it because I just thought it was a no-brainer. We have $30 million of taxpayer money floating around out there, which we were, we're soon to be talking about the construction of a new high school at the existing site, so Wonderland's off the table. Why, why we're acting like we don't want to talk about this is beyond my wildest imagination. I mean, there's a piece of land down there that was originally purchased for the, with the intention of an educational facility, and now there's not, so how, why, I mean, is this, what kind of sense does it make to not have a meeting and fill the city council in as to what we're going to do with the land? It just makes no sense. It's, I, I wasn't planning on speaking, I thought this was just common sense, we're going to vote it through and figure out what are we going to do now with Wonderland. That's all I have to say, Mr. President. I, I do plan on voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you. Anyone else? If I may, from the chair, just, I don't disagree, I think it's always worthy of a conversation. This is, this is a big part of what's going on in the city, and we certainly should have a conversation to figure out which direction we need to head, so I'll be in support as well tonight. All in favor? All in favor? So ordered.
Late motions, calendar item number 14, motion presented by counselors Rizzo and McKenna that the city council request the License Commission to grant the Beauchesneau VFW post 6712 a parking lot license for overflow hotel parking.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Apparently, the Beauchesneau VFW, who's undergoing some pretty major renovations right now, have been renting out their parking lot for overflow parking for some of the neighboring hotels, and they were advised that they needed to get either a license or a special permit. I'm not sure which, I was, we were communicating with the city clerk earlier today about what direction we might want to go in. This motion is just to get the ball rolling so we can figure out how can we get them the proper certification so that they can use the lot for overflow parking, and I don't know, Counselor McKenna, if you want to add to that.
Counselor McKenna.
Just a little bit. The Beauchesneau VFW has been going through some also financial debt, and this, it just helps them keep their place afloat, so I just want to say that, you know, I think this is a good motion. Thanks.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I commend my colleagues for this motion, however, there's another path we need to take. It's probably the special permit or maybe a zoning change, but we want to help the VFW, and, and we will, so to be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Took the words out of my mouth. I just want to make sure that we're, we're acting consistently so that you never know. Every private address in the city could use overflow parking, and we wouldn't want that. So this will be going to a committee vote. All in favor? I refer to, referring to zoning subcommittee. All in favor? So ordered.
Late motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the city council award a certificate of merit to Christopher Chivaria, a fifth grader at the Lincoln School in recognition of his fight against leukemia in a search for a bone marrow transplant match. Christopher's will to live and his determination to fight for his life is an inspiration to all Revere residents and others who are facing similar battles against cancer.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Madam Clerk, if we could just put this motion from the whole council, I would appreciate that. You know, it, it's times like this that, that, you know, you sit and wonder and contemplate a lot of things, and, you know, Christopher, I had the opportunity to read to his class a few times, and his, his teacher, who, who just adores him, Ms. Jacqueline Ciati, she, she brought this to my attention, that one of the classes I read to, Christopher was now in Children's Hospital, so I will be taking this citation and also a key to the city that the mayor gave to, to Christopher, and I will read the citation. Throughout Christopher's life, he's exhibited the strength, determination, and will to live through his battle against childhood leukemia. Christopher has always maintained an infectious smile, charm throughout his treatments, and has been an inspiration to others who may be fighting this terrible disease. Christopher and his family have been, have raised awareness of childhood leukemia in the city of Revere and have brought recognition from his determination and bravery that is necessary to carry out his fight and to be cured. In witness whereof, the certificate of merit is gracefully bestowed by the mayor, the city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizen in its third day of April in the year of our Lord 2023, in Independence of the United States of America 246th. This has been signed by the full council, Secretary Ashle Melnick, and the mayor, Brian Orego, and as well as the mayor dropped off the, the key to the city for, for Christopher, and this is kind of when, when the job means the most and, and pretty amazing thing to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All in favor? So ordered.
And lastly, late motion presented by Counselor Morbido that the following ordinance be ordered to a public hearing on April 24th, zoning ordinance amendment relative to home-based childcare use.
Counselor Morbido.
Thank you, Mr. President. The purpose of this amendment is to make more affordable childcare options for residents throughout Revere by reducing zoning barriers and help develop more home-based childcare businesses. Speaker not on?
No, no.
Oh, okay, I thought you said, for telling me it wasn't on. I apologize. Currently, the city ordinance limits home childcare businesses to no more than four children per business and requires a special permit by the city council. Under this amendment, the home daycares would be more in check with the state level and to operate by right in 12 of the 19 zoning districts, and if Tom can speak a little more on that.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Morbido, and good evening, everybody. Tom Skrowski, chief of planning and community development for the city. In 2021, the city led efforts to create a workforce development plan. One of the things that that plan highlighted was the need to expand childcare availability throughout the city. I speak both as a community development professional and a father of three young children of the importance of quality, affordable childcare as a key component of workforce development. It's critical. So after that plan, specifically it called out reforming our local zoning ordinance to better align with state regulations on childcare, so we moved forward with a community strategy to reform our local zoning ordinance. We worked with an advisory committee, multiple focus groups, and multiple community meetings, and the end result was a zoning ordinance change that's in front of you this evening. The reason it's coming in as a late motion in working with the community, because this really was a community project that we, we led, but it was with the support of the community. We thought of the different options we have to initiate a zoning petition per Mass General Law, Chapter 48. One of them is to have a petition of registered voters in the city, specifically you're required to have 10, but we thought it would be a great show of the local support to get as many signatures as we could for people that, that felt like this was a critical issue of importance. So just in the last week, we pulled over 100 signatures of registered voters, and that's included in the petition, but the reason this is coming in front of you is a late motion initiated by Counselor Morbido is because ultimately we are advised if the city is going to present on this ordinance and the merits of the change, ultimately it should come as a formal city ordinance, either from the city council or from the planning board, and because the city, the planning board doesn't meet until next week, we would miss the April 24th public hearing, which is a date that in working with folks in the community to develop this strategy, we talked about this being the date that everybody put on their calendars to come out and speak in support of, and we want to continue moving ahead with that April 24th date, which is why Counselor Morbido was generous at the 11th hour to put this in as a petition, and I hope you all will entertain it. Again, this is just the start of a conversation, it's not the, the end of it. From this, it would go to a public hearing with the planning board, with the city council, and there would be ample opportunity to talk about the substance of the bill itself. Happy to take any questions if you have them.
And just a point of information, the city clerk did send every counselor a copy of the ordinance along with the red line draft.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to commend Counselor Morbido for, for this motion and Tom Yow work on, on this. I know our state delegation is also working on, on changes to, to the rules and up at the State House. One of the outdated things that I was talking to Senator Edwards on childcare was, one of, one of the barriers that, that we have against, in the city is each child that's, that's in a childcare facility needs one parking spot, and that one blew my mind because I'm not sure how many of them are driving to be watched at daycare, but, so we do have to take a look at some of this stuff to, to create better jobs and care for, for those in the, affordable childcare for those in our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other counselors? All in favor? This is going to be referred to zoning as well? Madam Clerk?
A public hearing.
Oh, a public hearing. Ordered to a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.
Thank you.
I have a few points of personal privilege. Counselor Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually have two points of personal privilege.
You're only allowed one tonight, okay. All right, well, okay, we'll let you have two.
The first one is actually, it's a request for a moment of silence. Last week, the city of Revere and North Revere in particular, lost a giant, Mr. Armando Sani Citro passed away, and for those in political circles, Sani may not have been a public official, but he was a supporter of many elected officials over the years, and in his day was very active in the North Revere neighborhood group and just a dynamic force. He was an Italian immigrant, came to the United States from Salerno when he was just a young boy, and he worked many years as an ironworker, just supporting his family, and he leaves behind his wife Fran and his children and grandchildren, so we will miss Sani. North Revere, especially Franklin Street, will miss Sani Citro, so I'd ask that we stand for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And then my second point, this week is Holy Week, tonight's Monday of Holy Week, and we will be celebrating Easter Sunday, next Sunday, so I just wanted to wish the residents of Revere a very happy Easter, Bon Appasqua to the Italian-Americans, but also, this Holy Week falls during the holy month of Ramadan for our Muslim brothers and sisters, so I'd also like to wish a Ramadan Mubarak to our Moroccan-American community members and Muslim Americans who celebrate. And just one quick story, a couple of years ago, it's, it's not often that Ramadan and our Christian holidays fall within the same time period, and I believe it was two years ago, the festival of Eid, which marked the end of Ramadan, coincided with Ascension Thursday, which is one of the final celebrations of the Easter season, and it was really quite something, as the Ward Six counselor, I do have St. Mary's Church, and I also have a mosque on Marble Street, and on that Ascension Thursday morning, our Catholic brothers and sisters were going into the nine o'clock mass at St. Mary's, and our Muslim brothers and sisters were using the parking lot at St. Mary's to walk over to their Eid celebration at their mosque. So only in the United States of America can that happen peacefully and coexist together, so I would like to just recognize that. Happy Easter, Ramadan Mubarak. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselfski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Serino. Just a side, side note, last night, several of us went to the Iftar at the Castle of Chia, and you talk about the togetherness of different religions. It was very impressive and seeing, seeing the way the Moroccans were celebrating and the way they acknowledged all our religions, the Catholic and the Jewish religion during this ceremony and during their speeches, it was very breathtaking and thankful. My note tonight is to all my Jewish friends in Revere, there aren't as many of us as there used to be, but our Passover season begins on Wednesday, goes for eight days, and as usual, it always coincides with the Easter, Easter season, so it's, we all are together in some way, shape, or manner. We have that connection, and I would just want to wish everybody a happy Passover and to you and everybody else, happy Passover, Pass, Easter, and also Mubarak to everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And before we close tonight, if I could also offer my wishes, as mentioned, a few of us did attend last night's AICP event, but it is a great feeling, like Counselor Serino mentioned, you live in a country like the United States, and you're, you're able to have some of the holiest of weeks all combined in the same month, and we can all do it together, understanding that each culture makes different sacrifices, especially this holy month with Passover and Ramadan and Easter, we all have a better cultural understanding of each other, and that's the way that we should, we should live our lives, so we wish everyone a happy holiday month, and we hope to see you all at the next council meeting on April 24th. Have a great day. Thank you.